We call the Polk County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, April 20th to order. And do we have receipt of evidence and proper notice?
County Board of Supervisors April 20th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on April 9th, 2021, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of April 12th, 2021. In addition, on Friday, April 9th, 2021, at 22:00 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meetings, meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the Government Center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to supervisors and media via email at 3:17 PM on Friday, April 19th, 2021.
Station Council, does that need the proper notice?
Yes, it does.
Roll call?
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Robby.
Here.
Steve Warren Dahl.
Please excuse.
Chris Nelson.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Mike Pritchard.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jim O'Connell. Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
And Duncanson.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
John Bonafrye.
Here.
And Joe Dumeling.
Here.
Get 13.
John, you want to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, and do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, following the pledge allegiance, I want to take a moment of silence in honor of Ken Sample. Ken Sample, he was from District 11, Jay Luke's predecessor. And a few of you probably didn't know some of the things that Ken was a, he was a part of a material before Ross, he knew more about policy and everything, and it was always a point of order. And I will say of all the people that I've ever worked with on Polk County government or any kind of government, Polk County got more bang for the buck under Ken Sample than anybody that I could ever imagine. And he wasn't ultra-conservative, he had the vision that we had to do this right, the right thing at the right time. I spoke with his wife, and she's out of town tonight, and so we'll just have a moment in memory. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ken, and your family for your service.
Thank you, Ken. One thing, too, before we get going, Vince and Malia both have family obligations. They had to leave the area today to travel, so. Let's see, we have Deputy Administrator Chad and Joe will be handling the show tonight. Number five, raise your hand if you have any conflicts. Do we, can we get approval of the agenda now? I guess we'll, can we first make a first and a second, then? I got to change the agenda a couple items, or should I do it ahead of time?
You should do it prior to the approval.
Okay, so what I'd like to make changes to the agenda. The first thing would be, on the committee of the whole, we're going to move number 16, Dan Barr, up to the slot of number 12. We are going to strike 18A off the agenda. Oh, and we actually struck 12. So striking 12 on the committee of the whole, since Malia's not here, and striking 18, that was a request by Supervisor Lou, and then just the moving of Dan Barr up to the first of the committee of the whole. Can I get a?
I move for approval as the changes as presented.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign, carried. Okay. A consideration correction to the published minutes of the March 16th board meeting. Of this, oh, we're on the matter of the, sorry. Do we have a motion to, for the consent agenda? Supervisor Roddy, second, Olson, any discussion about the consent agenda? And none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carried. Public comments, do we have any public comments? No public comments? No public comments, saying none. County Board Chairs report. One thing I wanted to bring up was this month, just wanted to give you guys an update, we had to vote on WITC Board of Directors, and I think one positive thing is Josh Robinson got elected. He's the Frederick School Superintendent, so he'll be staying on, I believe, as president of WITC Board. And then we also have a Polk County resident, Amber Richardson, from Amory, the Clayton area, who is a new member on the WITC Board, and we were approved to do that. And also, they have a name change coming, I don't know if everyone's heard, but WITC will be rolling out by fall, they'll be, they'll be called Northwood Technical College late this summer. And the WIT president, John Will, will be making his rounds to all the counties in the area and coming to see us, too. That's all I have on the Chair's report. County Administrator?
Few items. Regarding the American Recovery Plan funding, our estimated award right now is $8.491 million. We received half likely around the second week of May, the other half no sooner than 12 months after the first. We're still waiting on guidance from Treasury on how that money can be spent. It's likely we're going to receive the money before we receive the guidance. So we'll be holding the money in some kind of investment until we get the guidance. Staff will be developing options based on the goals of the Board of Supervisors, as well as the guidance from Treasury. You know, the focus of those options, you know, will hopefully be the, you know, big impact on the county, economic stimulus to the county, you know, use this one-time funding for the betterment of the county and really to move Polk County forward. On the economic side of our performance, sales tax for the first quarter of 2021 was flat with 2020. That's a little concerning, especially since 2020's first quarter was up significantly over 2019, you know, and that was pre-COVID, we saw a lot of growth. It's a mixed bag, though, because housing applications and new sanitary applications are up. So, you know, our, sales tax-wise for 2020, we came in at about $3.9 million, and we had budgeted $3.375 million, so we performed really well even with COVID. But we're maintaining a very fiscally conservative approach to how we run the county government, because this mixed bag, we have no idea what's, what's on the horizon for the county. The GAM audit is complete, highways closing and audits are nearly complete, and then I have the first meeting with the auditors Monday morning, and they'll be on campus beginning the following Monday. We received a groundwater study grant from DACCAP for $10,000. We'll test 100 wells in the Wapo watershed, and then Environmental Services Division Bob's group has already applied for a similar grant for 2022 and has plans. The kickoff is early May and completion is slated for. I do want to take a minute to recognize the County Clerk's office, because they just came off another election, and, you know, I will say, they, that's seven elections in 14 months, one of which was a presidential election. And, you know, they've also, they assisted 35 of our municipalities with grants to get new voting machines to replace obsolete ones, and they provided training classes and outreach for the municipalities, even though we have a new county clerk, Lisa Ross, two new deputies, Shabana Lundin and Hannah Kip. So the fact that they've managed to make it through seven elections in 14 months during COVID and also do those things, I think you need to recognize. Regarding the fair and negotiations, we have no negotiating, no negotiating contact or response from the fair. We have been informed that they're seeking legal counsel before taking next steps. We've sought clarification as the purpose of getting legal counsel, and for now, until we get some clarification and further communication, all fair projects have, have been halted. You know, as of today's date, there's still been no further communication from the fair society, so we're kind of waiting to see what next steps are. We got a TIF payout from the City of Amory for TIF number five, which was opened in '92 and closed in 2018, and we got a payout of about $237,000, which goes back into our general fund for other use. But I wanted to point this one out, because something that was fascinating to me, this was a TIF that included the south side of Griffin and the Stour Industrial Park. So the base value prior to the TIF being formed in '92 was $182,200. The closed value was $6.7 million, so it had a growth of $6.5 million. Now, TIFs do serve a good purpose if they work. That's, that's incredible economic growth for an area and for the county as a whole. And finally, the County Comprehensive Trail Network Plan, we got the RFP responses back last week and opened them. He tagged Met last night, and they went through the responses, and they came up with a recommendation for the Administrator. They've got a recommended vendor, the Administrator will review that recommendation, and then Vince has up until May 17th, he can award it before or up to that, he can award the contract for the comprehensive. All of that, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? I'm sure she has way for questions. Tanya? What would update?
Well, I will give updates. First, starting out with COVID activity, we are seeing some rise in cases. From March 1st to the beginning of April, we had 158 cases, and now we've seen, since April 4th to today's date, we've had 237 cases. So it's just a message to, you know, be careful, because it's still here, there's variants around. The variants are in the region, we don't know of any in Polk County yet, we have not been contacted that there are confirmed variants, but it is just a good reminder to keep practicing good distancing and mask wearing and everything that we've been doing to try to keep the numbers down. With regard to the vaccine series, Polk County, in Polk County, we have 36.2% of our population has received at least one dose, 25.6% have received the series, and that could be the Johnson &amp; Johnson one-shot or the complete series with the two shots. We know that Johnson &amp; Johnson is currently paused right now while they do their research. CDC and the FDA are meeting on Friday again to discuss if they will be continuing the pause or if they will be releasing again for distribution. For our local data, I know our clinic has vaccinated 6,224 people. We are having another clinic tomorrow night for first dose, and then we will be looking at shifting our practice to do some more targeted vaccine marketing to areas that are underserved. So we will be pausing our vaccine clinic drive-through, just because it's a lot of resource to put that up, and we want to be able to send our resources where the vaccine is needed most. So look for that to be changing up a little bit. I think that's about all I have. Any questions?
Yep.
Yeah.
So because the numbers went up, are the, were the nursing homes now required to close down again?
No, I think there's only two nursing homes that have outbreak status right now. Coming back, back a couple months ago, every nursing home was in outbreak status, and they couldn't seem to get out of it, but we think that because of the vaccination, residents are now protected, and we only have two at this time, and I don't think they have scaled it back. I'd have to confirm that.
I'll track you after.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any questions, Tanya?
Question, where's the underserved piece? What communities are you going to, or where's that?
We'll be pulling data from the vaccines administered in the state database to target the areas that don't have ID code, so we'll do it that way. And then, you know, like underserved, more of a, more poverty areas, farmers, Amish, some of those groups. So it's called a strike team, so we'll be out and about driving around and providing vaccine.
Tanya, I'd just like to add one thing. I got my shot here a couple weeks, a week or two weeks ago, and it was a great experience. Everyone that worked, it was so professional, and I just can't tell you how well-oiled that process was, so hats off to all your staff for doing that.
Thank you, we do appreciate that, and we love to serve the public, so that's a good example.
And each time you come back, they've done something to make it better. So I keep telling the ones I was working with, document, document, document what you've got, because it's really good, so.
People are afraid to take a day off because we change things up when they're.
Thank you, Tanya. We have a motion going to committee of the whole.
I'll make a motion.
First, we got a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carried. Dan Barr, I think we're going to let Dan Barr give a, his, I'll let Dan Barr introduce himself and tell you why he's here, and I've got to set it up a little bit. Dan, is that we, I reached out to Dan, he works for WCA Wisconsin Counties Association, and one of the things we've done in executive committee and all the committees are being asked for is to work on the meth epidemic. And so one of the things we're asking Dan to do is to help us, give us some guidance to how do we make the successful resolution that gets through conference? And, you know, we did one a few years ago on meth, we've done a few of them that were kind of feel-good resolutions, and we're looking at trying to know when that due date is to get this to conference, and then also to give us some help, and he will come back and help in committee level, but how do we, how do we deal with this meth epidemic? And how do we include everybody? And it's just not about Polk County, it's about the state, and, you know, how do we craft successful resolutions that'll get broad support? And so that's why Dan's here, just to give us kind of a one, two, three, and go ahead, Dan, thank you for showing up on short notice.
Not a problem. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So first off, I think what you want to do, obviously, is a conference resolution, and those are taken up at the WCA Business Meeting in the fall. Now, that being said, if you don't submit it, you can still do a resolution to come before the WCA Board of Directors at any time, but we try to do the conference resolutions, because it's conference resolution, because it's our conference, doesn't mean you can't change the platform through another resolution, but if you do it at another time, and let's say you missed the deadline, you can still do a resolution, send it to us, and we could then have it go to our Board of Directors and update our platform in terms of, our platform allows us to lobby or lobby for or lobby against or not lobby on certain items. And so, but I would recommend a conference resolution, that way, the conference resolution at the business meeting, each county board chairperson, it represents their county, sometimes there's weighted voting, if that's the pleasure of the conference at that time at the business meeting, but essentially, you know, that's exactly, that's essentially how it's done. So you then have, we have 71 members, so 71 board chairs or a designee then would represent their county and would be able to vote. And so the process is essentially, the county sends in the resolution, the resolutions go to the steering committee, and the steering committee makes a recommendation, and subsequent to that, then, the resolution committee takes up the resolutions, and they then make a recommendation, and then you go to conference, and the final vote then with the conference resolutions takes place at the annual business meeting. And essentially, what, what can be done is they can adopt the resolution, be it resolved clause, in that case, if it's adopted, it would become part of the WCA legislative agenda, sorry, not legislative agenda platform, I should say, not legislative agenda, two separate things. It could refer it for more study to the Board of Directors or to a steering committee, or it could indefinitely postpone, which would defeat essentially the resolution. And so those are some of the outcomes that take place when a resolutions, conference resolutions are submitted. And so essentially, that's, that's sort of the process, and essentially, off the top of my head, and I should have looked this up, when these are due, typically in July, as our, as our conference takes place in September typically, mid to late September, but I will get you the date and let you know, let you know as soon as possible when they are due, so that you can get it in on time. You do have a couple months. But essentially, there's three guiding principles to consider when you write your resolution. Is a resolution timely? For instance, we oftentimes get resolutions on bills that have already been debated and are either dead or have been passed in legislature, and so if something has already been, for instance, we got a lot of the just-fix-it resolutions, maybe Polk County did a just-fix-it resolution a few years back, and then the budget would be over, and so the transportation budget is done, we already have platform positions on related transportation, so a resolution like that necessarily is not timely. A second consideration in terms of guiding principle is the resolution of statewide concern. Certainly, you're talking about opioids, and so that's certainly an issue of statewide concern, but the be it resolved clause should reflect those statewide concerns, they're definitely going to be applicable to Polk County and many other counties, so those will be of statewide concern also, but what you want to avoid doing is addressing topics that are specific only to Polk County. For instance, let's assume, and I've seen this happen before, a county may do a resolution that says, let's say hypothetically, the county has a resolution that says, well, we'd like the state to direct state funding in the, in the, for the state trunk highway system for the reconstruction of State Highway 10 to the west of Turtle Lake, which is basically all of Polk County. Well, that's something that wouldn't really pass the smell test, because it's, it's a regional concern in Polk County, but that portion of the highway not necessarily of statewide concern. A more proper statement would be to increase funding for repair and replacement of the state trunk highway system. Essentially, you know, looking at different programs that affect the state highway system and improving state, the entire pot, so that's, it's, you're addressing a statewide concern, because we're a statewide association, you know, typically, within our platform, we don't have platform positions that refer to specific counties, typically we don't, unless there is a genuine statewide concern. And now, these are guiding principles, the conference, you know, in conference at the business meeting, the group could decide, well, we still think that this is an important highway that needs to be addressed, and people from all over the state are traveling on it, so it is of statewide concern. And so, you know, essentially, they could move forward with that, but it makes it more unlikely, because a lot of people would view something like Highway 10 west of Turtle Lake as not being of statewide concern.
Dan? Yep. Dan? It's Highway 8, just to help you out.
Sorry, okay, okay, sure, sorry about that. Highway 8, yes, yes.
Everyone's glass, they don't know where Highway 10 is.
Yes, okay, no, gotcha, no, Highway 8, okay. And then also, does the resolution address a county issue? And this is also something that has come up before, and there's been some heated debates about whether we're actually addressing a county issue, you know? For example, let's say someone wanted to come out and say, hmm, the official flag of the state of Wyoming should be, or the official, the official symbol of the state of Wyoming should be the robin. Well, the official bird of the state of Wyoming should be a robin. Well, it's not really a county issue, and so probably not something, you know, you would vote on. Now, you might say, well, there's robins here in Wisconsin, there's robins in every county in the spring and summer, so it's a county issue, we want to respect the robin. But people would say, no, you want to make sure that you're really addressing a county issue, and a lot of times, there are issues related to various things happening in society, various things that you may hear about, but they're not necessarily, or may not be viewed as being relative to the function of county government. And so the board will look at that, they'll consider item number three, I don't know if you have the guiding principles in front of you or not, but does the resolution address a county issue? A lot of times, if it's a social issue or political issue, it doesn't directly necessarily relate to the functioning of the county government, the members of the, in conference at the business meeting will say, no, it doesn't. And so then the resolution will fail. But if you stick with those three guiding principles, make sure that your resolution is broad enough so that it's affecting state government, make sure that it's timely, want to get it in on time, I can help you with that, and make sure that it's addressing the counties and their function in terms of handling the opioid issue. In that case, I think you have a good chance to get it through and get it passed. And so those are some of my suggestions in terms of the content. Does anyone have any questions on those items?
I think we'll just kind of wait for questions, Dan, we got a lot on our agenda night, we'll probably just invite you to a committee.
Okay.
We'll reach back out to you guys for some help.
Sure. Another, just real quick, I'll just, I did send some, a couple resolutions, I sent some conference resolutions, I sent an emergency declaration, but they're all resolutions. And so just understand, there's the resolved clause, and there's the whereas clauses, and it's the resolved clauses which are your action item, that's what you're doing with the resolution, that's really the only thing that matters. When you say be it resolved, that's essentially what you're intending to do. The whereas clauses are just simply justification for doing what you're doing, and they're sort of irrelevant, other than you're making your argument. And so a lot of times, you'll get resolutions, and people will try to amend the whereas clauses, you can't amend a whereas clause, because that's the person who introduces, introduced the resolution, that's their justification for doing what they're doing. You can amend, amend the resolved clause, so your action item, whatever it is you seek to do, whatever your policy is, you want to have it in the result clause. And so I would say that, and so if you have no questions, if you're good, I just hope I explained all that well, and I will get you the date, the due date, I don't know if it's even been set yet for conference resolutions, but I will get that for you. But just so you understand the process, just so you understand the three guiding principles, if you have questions, I'm happy to go more into detail of, you know, without, I don't want to get, you know, off topic, but I'm happy to go into detail of what is a statewide concern, this, you know, is there ideas that are not a county issue, in my opinion? Is the resolution timely? We'll get to the due date, I can do all those things. So that's where I'm at, is my presentation in a nutshell.
And I know Chad has those, I don't know if you're going to share them tonight at all on your PowerPoint, but why don't you address that you do have all the stuff Dan sent us. And Dan sent us some draft resolutions, you also should, in your packets, I believe there's some stuff from Dan that the county clerk included in your packets regarding the resolution.
And I'm embarrassed about, about incorrectly stating Highway 10, so I'm sorry. I've been up there many times, I love Polk County, and always happy to come up and spend some time with you up there.
I appreciate very much, Dan, and I thank you.
Appreciate you guys, too.
Hey, Chad, you want to jump in?
So, as you all know, at each of the committees, at each of the committees, we, hold on, yeah. We went to the disciplines committees, HHS heard from Community Services, Public Safety heard from the Sheriff's Office, CJCC, we kind of put together an overview of methamphetamine and CJCC. We've got a couple more committees to resume with, but Supervisor Lou asked that I repeat this here, so I'm going to kind of run through it. The first thing I want to point out about CJCC that I actually think is the most important thing, the CJCC is a three-legged stool. It is not the staff of the county, it's the staff of the county, it's the state tribal agencies from the DA's office and the judges, the tribal police, to the nonprofits and NGOs, which are very, very important. Without all those groups working together, you don't have a comprehensive CJCC. It's a collaborative effort. It's a collaborative effort, you know, um, that we got to have buy-in from all groups. All groups have to communicate and work together, which is the purpose of having a CJCC coordinator and providing that infrastructure. Help the collaboration. So methamphetamine is briefly what it is. Meth was developed during World War I, actually French warfare, to keep the fighters awake. In the fifties, it was a diet pill common in America. Everybody took it. Doctors prescribed it like crazy. And in the sixties, I didn't, the, uh, addictive properties were identified. And in the seventies, it was listed as a schedule one narcotic. Um, there are amphetamines, which are Adderall and other prescription drugs that have pharmaceutical uses. And there's methamphetamines, which are the things we talk about. Um, you know, the, the illicit narcotic is, uh, methamphetamine. It has some effects, reduces hunger, creates anxiety, creates intense cravings, produces dopamine. And it's instantaneous, much more so than even crack was in the nineties. And I don't know if crack was ever an issue here, but where I grew up and first worked, it was a really big issue. And we thought that was addicted until meth came. Um, the addiction is real. It's not just psychological, although that's a big impact. It's very much physiological. It causes a serious chemical imbalance. And if you lose that part of the balance, you know, you can't, you can't function. Physical effects, you know, we call it meth mouth, where teeth fall apart, lose weight, uh, your nutrition falls apart, create psychosis. All the things that we commonly associate with a meth head. There are clear physical effects as well. Doesn't mean everybody uses methamphetamine suffering. tends to be more prolonged use that results in these. So withdrawal and relapse risk, this is where meth is a very interesting drug as opposed to others. Alcohol, 90-day treatment programs, AA continuing on, following the steps, good recovery efforts, those kinds of things. Okay? 90-day treatment. Opioids can be a longer treatment, but there's still acute treatment methods. Methamphetamine is a very prolonged treatment period. Eighteen months, two years, you know, 30 months, very prolonged treatment. That's what makes the struggle with recovery so difficult. That's why the recidivism rate is so high. You have that, you know, acute withdrawal, the, the first few days, you know, that really impactful withdrawal. Withdrawal just keeps on and the drive stays there and it never really goes away. So then you get into how you deal with it. So you can deal with it with locking them up for that first period, you know? Get them clean for the first few weeks, but those effects are still there. And then, you know, you get out, they use again, and then everybody gets frustrated. They, they go to jail, get out, they use again, they're doing the same thing. It's because that, that impact is still there. Methamphetamine requires a very long, prolonged treatment cycle. Um, the most successful program I ever saw in my law enforcement career was a place called The Foundry. And people only came to it from parts of the state that weren't from the part of the state where it was. And it had really intensive inpatient. And then they moved you to communal living with inpatient and you go out and work and come back and you had intensive therapy. And then you would move to like apartments in an apartment block where you had a job full-time and outpatient therapy and all that. And it was a year and a half, two-year program before you were back standing on your own duty. Um, the other thing that is really important with methamphetamine is environmental effects. You know, really hard because you have such a recovery period. If you don't change the environment you came from, getting off methamphetamine is really, really difficult because you're exposed to that same environment. And I think the other thing that comes along with it is there is a very real and identifiable stigma that comes with being a methamphetamine user. And that's a stigma that follows you. So if you're known in the community as a methamphetamine user, even when you're in recovery, there are still people that are going to know you as a methamphetamine user. That's hard to get rid of that stigma, it really is. So we're going to, as we talk a little bit more, aftercare is a huge piece of this. What do we do after the initial arrest, the initial incarceration, the initial intensive therapy? Aftercare is the biggest piece that has a, a lot of work to go with after. So it has a lot of effects, family, economy, environmental, social. The kids see at home the behavior methamphetamine causes, they repeat the behavior. They don't know anything but. The kids are exposed to the behaviors of methamphetamine causes. They're subject to abuse and all that. You can't keep a job if your addiction is that bad. Methamphetamine is different even than heroin. There are a lot of long-term heroin users that are highly successful in very professional fields that operate for years. It's very well documented. You can maintain balance with methamphetamine. It's extremely hard to do. So you have those economic factors. Environmental, you know, we've talked about it before, the meth houses, the, the nuisances that are created by those, by those entities. Yeah. Back in the day, we were cleaning up meth labs. So we have those. That's not really much of an issue anymore. We just have the environmental, the no running water, the poor living conditions, the people exposed to it. Not to mention the public health issues that a lot of addicts have that never get treated, that then become a drain on the public health system. Because they kind of become exponential. So meth and crime, that's a felony similar to heroin. Alcohol, first OWI is a civil offense. And we're going to talk about alcohol and marijuana because your board priorities are substance abuse prevention and reduction and public safety. And we can't only talk about methamphetamine because we do have other substance abuses. Marijuana, first position, misdemeanor. You know, it's, it's a stimulant. It's addictive. It's hard to get off of. People want it. I mean, they, they keep going for it. So they commit crime a lot of times to keep that happen. Um, a lot of property crimes and it's hard to quantify. A lot of property crimes are tied to methamphetamine and other drug use because you commit property crimes to get the money to afford the drugs. A lot of domestic violence is directly related to substance abuse, alcohol, methamphetamine, other use. Child abuse, those cases, there are a lot, a huge percentage that are tied to substance abuse. Sex crimes, substance abuse is almost always hand in hand with sex crimes. Uh, and then, you know, as we said, criminal activity, violent crime, that tends to come from the psychosis, the rage, the domestic fights, those kinds of things. Throwing you into that rage where interrupting a robbery, interrupting a burglary, interrupting the lower crime. So average age at first use, this is what's interesting. And you'll see these charts are broken out by alcohol, marijuana, opioids, stimulants. Meth falls in the stimulant class. Opioids, heroin, oxycontin. So first stage of use is interesting. Look how young they're using alcohol. Look how young they are when they're using marijuana. Opioids tend to be a little older. Methamphetamine here. Now, this is the one thing I will say, and I will never move off this position. I believe that alcohol and marijuana are gateway drugs. Not everybody who uses alcohol and marijuana uses harder drugs. But in multiple years working narcotics, I almost never interviewed a hard drug user that didn't start somewhere. So these ages and how we intervene are highly important. When we intervene early, that's, that's when you make impact. This is just kind of a breakout by ages. All right. So these are drug arrests for Polk County, 2017, 2018, 2019. We don't have more recent because UCR has finished. Um, again, you've got alcohol, marijuana, opioids, synthetics. Our arrests for alcohol are still our predominant substance abuse arrests. Uh, marijuana, see where it is, and it's very closely to synthetics. Most of those synthetic arrests are going to be methamphetamines. So looking at hard drug arrests, most of our hard drug arrests are by far methamphetamines. And you can see a climb in each of those three years. Oh, the sheriff's office, and I'll speak as their former chief deputy. The, the troops are incredibly, incredibly adept at catching the offenders. But then we got to deal with them after that. But if you broke this out into who's reoffending is where the real picture is. How many people were multiple arrests? How many people were arrested in January and then in October? That's, that's the key and that we, that's how we have to stem. So prevention, enforcement, treatment, again, another three-legged stool. You can't, you know, you can't arrest your way out of substance abuse problems. You can't not arrest and only treat. I mean, you just, and, and prevention education is key. That juvenile gap, you know, intervening early is, is the key to it. And interestingly enough, in the governor's budget this year, if you go through his budget line by line, there's a major emphasis for juvenile offenses, juvenile crime, juvenile intervention. Um, there's a lot of focus in the initial budget presentation. So here's the cycle and what they call the recovery model. You got the pre-use, then you got the use. So you, you have, really have two options there. You arrest, then they go to diversion and treatment or incarceration, or you get them in diversion and treatment. Okay. After the arrest, incarceration, either diversion and treatment. Then aftercare, again, that's the big thing. How, how, once you get this intensive acute action taken, how do you deal with them after that so that they don't reoffend? And that's really, that aftercare is huge to leading stability ultimately. Otherwise you just end up with a circle. End up with a circle over and over again, which I think is what gets so many people frustrated. Is why do these things keep happening? You got to break down to that circle, but you've got to have the systems in place to pull people out of that circle. And have the systems, you have to have the funding, you have to have the will, you have to have the support. All right. These are the present options we have in Polk County. So alcohol, we have the first time offender program. For repeaters, we have the IDIP, which we've just moved over to CJCC. ADA Webster's been really helpful in getting that off the ground with our treatment case managers. And getting that moved over and really getting focused. Marijuana, we have the first time offender program. And our diversion case manager, Julie Prikka, has done a good job drawing people into that and starting to build that program up. Uh, for methamphetamine, presently we have the treatment court, which is a well-established, mature program. Um, sometimes we have 17 participants. I had a meeting with staff this morning. We have 10 as of right now. And it goes up and down. Um, but we've got some applicants in, in the queue and we've got some people who recently graduated. Graduations are key. The fact that people are completing these 18-month programs and graduating is successful, that's in the column. Um, opioids, you see, we really don't have programs in place within the CJCC. But we honestly don't see opioids like other places see it. There could be a million reasons why because it's all around us. What we see are alcohol, marijuana and stimulants. And I go back to this again because CJCC is a group and it's, it's all these users that put into it. And it doesn't work without it. Um, the sheriff can only arrest so many people. Um, he can keep arresting them, but the sheriff can't do it on his own and we have to support all the groups that are in it and work with them. So what can you guys do? Because that's the question I get asked all the time. What can we do as super? And that's an important question and there's a very key role. So you can lobby, you know, the suggestions, proposal to extend badger care to jailed people. So, so that inmates get coverage while they're in jail. Offsets county costs, helps provide services, that kind of thing. For mental health, substance abuse treatment options. Right now our deputies are still driving to Winnebago most of the time to transport somebody for a confinement. That's a 10-hour trip unless our troops have been working for six hours and then get a commitment. Then they drive and then they have to get a hotel and sleep and drive back because we can't have them on the road. I mean, there was nothing more frustrating than me to come in the next morning and learn that somebody had to sleep because, you know, I'm not frustrated them for sleeping, but they've been working for 19 hours and not back home to transport somebody across the state. You can support the diversion programs. You guys have been great. The amount of support that's come out for CJCC since 2018. And the reinitiated support and your patience with rebuilding the CJCC has been tremendous. But, you know, that has to stay in place for it to happen. The jail reentry, the society program, we've made huge strides in the jail with program. Uh, we did that with some staff that existed. We've worked with WITC, they're working with CJCC, working with behavioral health to get programs in there so that people aren't just sitting on their hands in the jail, waiting to get out and, you know, cause more issues. We have GED programs in the jail never before. Um, last time I checked, I think we had five people in there. Um, so those kinds of things are important. And then aftercare, you'll hear from probation, you'll probably hear from the honors if they want to speak. Aftercare is really, really important. And aftercare consists of a lot of things, most of them well outside my area of expertise, I know you would be better. Uh, it's providing that support after that acute response in order to get them cleaned up and get the families stabilized. Get the environment stabilized and keep them from reoffending. And then you can communicate to constituents, what's the county doing about meth? The county's done a lot. In 2018, you allotted several FTEs to substance abuse, to counseling. We put the CJCC in place. We've allotted an FTE in the jail to a program services officer to provide those programs. We've built a drug testing center in the jail. Um, that was a collaboration before, between the former CJCC and the sheriff's office. We've done a lot of things to build up our system. We have an evolved drug treatment program. You know, when we have a drug treatment graduation, I know there's some supervisors that have attended, but it's a pretty neat thing. You know, talking about those things and the things that can be done because it is community effort that keeps this building. That's, that's what really rises up. The aftercare is things like Salvation Army, finding housing, finding jobs, finding transportation so they can drug test. You know, those kinds of things that are really difficult that the county itself cannot provide. We have to have active departments. Um, and how substance abusers can seek help. That's one reason we're kind of doing this round of, uh, presentations, you know, that the committee wanted. So that you guys know what we're doing for your board priorities. So that when your constituents come back to you, you can say, well, this is what we've done. What ideas do you have so I can take back and talk about it? Because that's the stuff we want.
Any questions? All I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Well. You know, I want to, I want to thank Judge Tolan and Judge Anderson. I want to thank the sheriff's department for all listening in and helping us. And I encourage all of our committees over the next month or two to work on these ideas of these resolutions. And we reach out to everybody and, uh, try to make some changes and hopefully we can get some resolutions through the, uh, through the WCA. So that's the goal and hopefully it's a priority on every committee. So the next item, uh.
Can I ask you? Uh, do you know when the next graduation on drug court is? CJCC?
Uh, we just had, I believe, two apply for stage four. And I think we have one in stage four. So I would say, and the honor might be able to speak to this better because I went through the timer. Probably six months, nine months, something like that, your honor. Is that right?
Yeah, at least 90 days from this point. Just had one and, uh, there's, there's a couple that are advancing.
Let us know when.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
He and I have been to several of them. Just somebody else, but, oh, I encourage all the super. Just try and get to one graduation. See how they, uh, their families are there and they have a calendar for graduation. It's impressive. It makes you feel like, yeah, there is a good accomplishment.
Any other questions? Okay. And thanks everyone that, uh, judges don't want to sit here and listen to the rest of the evening. I have no problem with you guys getting on with your lives, but if you feel like hanging in. Uh, number 14, are where we're at now? So we have a discussion regarding resolution number 1421. Just going to talk about that one. Is that you, Chair?
Yeah, I'll talk about that. So the.
So, the selection was made for LHB Corporation to do the A&E study for the Government Center update. This is an unbudgeted thing. We budgeted for borrowing in the event that the board decided to go with the actual project, but the plan for the architecture was to use funds from the general fund, and then in the event we decide to do the full project, we will borrow enough, pay for the project, and to reimburse the general fund for the A&E. So, this resolution appropriates and amends the 2021 budget to allow for the spending to hire LHB.
And we ran this, was this through general government? Yeah, the general government moved us on. One of the things we did in general government is we decided to move forward with the architectural and the engineering. We decided not to hire a construction manager at this point, and to allow that process to go forward, get the bids, you know, we'll get the bids in. I don't remember the dates for when the bids will actually be due on the project, but we'll get the bids, and then as a board, we'll, we'll be working on this project through the committee as a whole. So, every month, this will be on our agenda now until the project's actually started, maybe even carry through the project, so.
We should have, I stressed to LHB that we would need good, solid numbers in order to go out to bond if you all chose to do so by mid- mid- August. I got to be out to market, I said. And they said they can meet that.
And this resolution is, is after committee as a whole will be voting on this resolution to appropriate the funds, right, for hiring these, this firm? Any questions at all, by supervisors, about where we're going on that? Fran?
Just have a comment that in general government, having sat through the more in-depth discussion and presentation, that personally, I felt like this was something that we needed to do in order to gather all the information, make a decision about if we were going to do a project and if we were with the scope of that project.
The other item in committee as a whole is county and the Clam Falls Dam, where we're at with all that. That resolution is also later on the agenda. So, again, maybe Chad, you can fill us in on where we're at and what, how we got here?
So, this, this resolution is non-binding in that it doesn't assume ownership of the Clam Falls Dam or say we are absolutely assuming ownership. What this does is expresses the county's interest to further investigate conditions of ownership, and that if they identify conditions that were satisfactory to the county board, then the county board could consider taking ownership with those conditions. But it's just, it's essentially an expression of interest in exploring if we could find acceptable.
I'd just like to add to that, that state senator, state assembly person, they are, they would like to use this as kind of their tool to actually, you know, get the funds. So, this is kind of a resolution saying, is the county board interested or not? If we get all the funding, the state gives us all the money to do the project, and Northwestern gives us enough money for the reclamation or to remove it, and the township and the people on the Lake District would have enough money to do the maintenance under these conditions and the proper insurance. It gives us a lot of, it gives us a lot of off-ramps if the county board is, does not consider them to be in the best interest of the county, but yet it gives the tool to the legislators to get the funding. And so far, the funding piece is going fairly well, from what I hear, so at the state. Supervisor Bonner Price.
I talked to our representatives today, and, yeah, they're, they're preparing to introduce the funding part into the budget of the. They'll need this as kind of our.
Supervisor Olson.
An update, I guess, from town of Clam Falls side of things. Best resolution last Wednesday night, there again, non-binding, just allowing the association to move forward, and the association is going to have a meeting Saturday, this Saturday morning now, and discuss what they want to do, where they want to go, which will then lead back, hopefully, the May Clam Falls Town Board meeting of a, you know, not a binding resolution, but saying perhaps how much they're willing to pick into the pot, so to speak.
This resolution just kind of keeps the ball rolling, is all it really does right now. Supervisor Pritchard.
Going to the comments here, that this is non-binding. My concern was that the resolution as written, I thought somewhat ambiguous, and I was thinking to myself here that it had a condition that higher.
So, so that could be done when we actually?
I think I'd rather take the time in a committee of a whole than?
Yeah, no, that's not what the committee as a whole is for, is here's for just broad discussion. I don't, I, you, I'll ask.
A broad discussion.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me.
Yeah, okay, so you're done asking your questions, and if that's how you're going to act tonight, Mr. Pritchard. I was going to try to tell you, you can have a broad discussion, but don't start in committee as a whole proposing ideas that you're going to make on the floor when you can actually amend it. I believe that would not be proper.
I'd like to discuss the concept.
You can discuss anything you want. You have a few minutes to discuss, but don't make a motion or an idea that you're going to amend it later. Do that when it's on the agenda to amend.
But I would like to talk about the concept, if I may.
Give it another try. Give it another try. Let's see where you go.
It was concerned that the resolution as written, as vague as to whether or not it would be considered binding on the county.
Sure. Is that a question?
I would, I'm going to finish my comment.
Okay.
I would like to see it be a little more specific, to say that it is what Director Robert just said, that it's non-binding.
Sure.
And have that be?
Well, we can have, so let's, let's get that question answered about it being non-binding. Corporation Council, could you clarify whether this is binding or non-binding?
It is the Corporation Council's opinion that this particular resolution as drafted is non-binding. That opinion was given by Ms. Malone and is included on the resolution itself, addressing the legal impact. I share that position. I understand the concerns of Mr. Pritchard. The board can always add additional language that could be as specific or nonspecific as necessary, and so additional language could theoretically be added, but I believe that as it's drafted, it is not a specific binding resolution that would require the board to then, if these things occur, require the board to enter into any kind of agreement, because there is no proposal as of yet. So, there, there would be no response, no contract being made or agreed to by the board by resolving this, because there is no offer.
And I believe those were the same answers you were giving at general government when you made that before. Go ahead, Mike.
Just to point out that we're expecting people to act in, I have said, if you will, on this resolution, some of, some of these people. I would ask this if the minutes could reflect what Council just said for future.
And I, I think it would be important for anyone acting upon the resolution to make themselves aware of what happened at the board meeting as well, so that they would be, they, they wouldn't be acting in any way in reliance upon the resolution without informing themselves further.
Thank you. If you could take a minute.
All right. Any other questions? Supervisor Middleton.
The last couple meetings ago, we were talking about this insurance policy piece, and Vince was going to try and get some numbers and see if it was even possible. Do we have any numbers on the cost of this thing?
Well, I've spent a good bit of time talking to our brokers and various insurance agencies. We have, for liability, our numbers are roughly $16,000 for a liability policy for the year. For property damage, there's a couple of different options. The one the broker recommends is since repairs have to be done, those would be done with this funding and stuff, that we would actually have a builder's policy that covered the property damage for the course of repairs, and then we would go to market for an actual property damage policy after the repairs were done. So, it's a different approach, but what the broker recommends.
I'll work on that number?
Well, the builder's policy is actually carried by whoever does the repairs. So, that's not something that would be ours. Whoever took the contract to do the repairs would have that builder's policy.
I think, I think Amy, too, what I understand, being in some of these conversations, is that clearly there would be a very substantial document that we entered into any of this. Right now, this is really a lobbying resolution, and it's for the state to see if they're willing to even fund, because if the state doesn't fund the repairs of this, it's over right off the bat. So, before we even get to insurance and any of these other issues, the Corporation Council is going to be heavily involved. So, that's where some of this insurance questions were a little premature, but we kind of put it in here so that we would be able to kick that can down the road. If we find out down the road that this insurance is not even attainable, clearly, then again, we could get out. So, that's why these things were put in, but go, go ahead. You got another question?
I was just trying to get a feel for, like, so we're talking like $16,000 a year, all part insurance, that the builder piece would be covered under enough different?
Well, and that, I mean, that's the difficulty, because that's why we have to explore further, because there's the condition of the dam now as opposed to the condition after it were repaired, and that's been the difficulty in talking with the insurers. It's a lot of, a lot of patchwork to get it put together.
Hubert, let me go to someone else. Mike, I'll come back to you when everyone else has had a chance. Fran?
I just, I just have a couple of comments, I guess. I view this as being a civil matter, that it isn't really the county's job to step into. You know, the dam is really there preventing nature doing what it wants to do. I don't think it necessarily is the county's job to save lakes. I think the county set somewhat of a precedent in that they didn't do anything with the dam on the Half River. I've spoken to a couple of folks who live up there, really nice folks, had a lot of empathy for them and what they're going through, but I think, for me, it's too difficult to justify supporting something we know so little about at this point, liability-wise and cost-wise.
I believe we do own towed two dams. We own D.D. Kennedy and Atlas, so we already do own a couple, just for the record, just so you know.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mike, or go Doug, go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out how to word this, but the reason I'm uncomfortable with anything that says the current owner, because the last discussions we had on the dam before we voted it down was he started at $750,000, and he went to $700,000, and he went to $600,000, and it just kept coming back. He says, it's, it might seem to you that we're lowering our contribution. Well, it kind of seemed that way to me.
Right. So, I'm going to address that, because that was one of the things, too, supervisor Demling brought up, and one of the things we did in here, we put the, the number two or number three? Yeah, number two. The current owner, which would be Northwestern Power, compensates the county in the amount equal to the cost of removal and reclamation of the dam to be used in a non-lapsing fund to cover future maintenance, repair, and insurance costs. So, what we're saying is that it doesn't matter what Northwestern is offering us today or what they offered us in those meetings when we actually said we weren't interested when they withdrew their offer, because they could just tell there was no support. What this says is that, we, I read it, and this was asked by a couple supervisors, is that they should give us what it would cost them in 2022, 2023, whatever that cost is for them to remove the dam and do the reclamation, someone's going to have to determine what that cost is, and it's not going to be Northwestern Power. It's going to be an outside firm. Someone's going to say the dam costs 700, $900,000 to remove today, and there's going to be a reclamation of $500,000. Whatever those numbers are, that's what this resolution says they're going to have to give us. So, if it's a million and a half dollars that Northwestern's going to have to pay for the project, well, if we're going to take it over, that's one of the items to say, we have to be comfortable with that number someday. So, that's kind of how we address that issue in this, so just kind of helping there clarify Any other questions that people have been asked?
What you two were talking about. Does that mean that, are we saying in number two, that the cost to removal and reclamation of the dam, we'll price it, we'll mark it on the market, 2022 price, we keep it for five years, and then want to take the dam out for some reason, we pay the difference?
Well, I, I think, I think the idea was, was that, that whatever that cost would be at the time of us, if we would, if we would decide, that money that would be put in a designated fund, the county would hold on to those funds forever in a designated fund. Sure, 20, 30, 50 years from now, the numbers are going to be higher, but at least future county boards would have substantial reserve fund to do what they would need to do generations down the road. This repair that the DNR is requiring, if the DNR is requiring it, we're saying state that you pay for it, right? You want this repaired, then you pay us or pay someone to do the repairs. My guess, and I don't know what the years would, you know, how many years of warranty you have on a dam repair like that, maybe Supervisor Olson may have an idea, the dam currently now is how, how old?
Hundred plus. Last time, last time the lake was drained was 1982, 1986, when, I wouldn't call it major, nothing that would go on like what would be done today to make the spillway three times as wide. Actually, in 1986, they worked on it because they were going to start to generate power there, and in 1987, they decided for whatever reason not to generate power there. So, that's, that's why the repairs were done in, in 86.
It'd be fair to say, maybe it's been 100 years, and now there needs to be a substantial repair. We might get another 100 years before there's going to be another project, hopefully, but no. Yeah, that's the risk. Okay, Mike, one last follow-up question, comment.
Condition four, how many Clam Falls provides annual funding through their tax authority to supplement ongoing costs? Maybe someone could tell me how far into the future the Clam Falls can hit its support?
I think, I think those costs were from originally when the current owners and the, there's two owners that were in the dam or the lease company, they said they were spending about $15,000 a year in maintenance costs. So, I'm assuming Supervisor Olson could probably answer that question.
Yeah, so if you break down just the true maintenance costs of, of what Renewable World Energies has spent on it in the six or seven, eight years that they've actually been the leasie of the dam. that they've actually been the leasie of the dam, take away their legal fees that they prorated in from other dams, somewhere in the neighborhood of less than $2,000 a year, and most of that has gone the way through. As, as far as, as far as upkeep on the dam.
So his question was, does, does the township anticipate they could continue? I, I don't know how you get out of agreement if you make an agreement today, but the township would obviously enter into agreement that would say they would continue doing those miscellaneous maintenance, or someone would, right? I mean, that commitment's there, obviously, if you're going to, if we're going to eventually sign off on this. Again, this is a non-binding resolution, these are just goals, but I'm sure there'd be a contract that you would be able to review front and back to make sure it's to your satisfaction.
Just from a legal standpoint question, how far into the future township Clam Falls can get?
Forever. All right, Joe.
How many residents are on that lake right now?
Twenty-four residents, I believe, 20, 26 or 27 different property owners. Some of them are the owners of, you know, two lots or, or three lots. The DNR owns roughly three-fourths of the property of the lake.
What would happen if these members just said, "To heck with it," and they moved out? How can you have a binding contract when you got nobody living there?
There you go, then the deal ain't going to work.
But you don't know until you might, it might be 20 years down the road, and then the county gets stuck.
Yes, that, there's the town supervisor.
That's what Saturday's meeting is, it's a, it's a meeting of the landowners. And there again, no different than anywhere else, it would, it would be a special assessment on their properties for, you know, X amount of dollars. So if they pack up and leave, somebody's still going to be paying those taxes.
It seems like very many people are moving off the lake and abandoning their property on lakes. I know Balsam Lake, I'm not worried about. We support the dam on Balsam Lake, and I don't know anyone leaving the community because they have to pay some rehab taxes to support the lake, so.
You've got quite a few people living on that lake.
Maybe Clam Falls will grow someday. But yeah, I hear you.
I'm done.
All right, I see, that's pretty good discussion. Do we have? I don't think anyone's mind's going to be changed anymore on that. That was the last one. We have a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Hall. First, second, all in favor by saying aye? We're back in the county board. We need a motion on Resolution Number 14-D21, amending the 2021 budget to hire LHB Incorporated for government center remodel project. Do we have a motion?
I'm on it.
What, motion second, second, discussion? Any more discussion on hiring the LHB? Seeing none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All saying sign? Very unanimous. Resolution 1521 outlining the requisite conditions for county ownership of Clam Falls Dam. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, any other discussion, Mike? Is this is where you want to make an amendment?
I am all right.
Okay. So is, is that appropriate, that the, the minutes do reflect that? Okay. All right. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Propose?
Propose.
Propose.
Carry. Special impossible action of standing committee agenda items and proposed resolution ordinance acted by standing committee. We did all that, we're, we removed 18A. So we're at Supervisor's announcements and reports from outside committees. Fran?
I attended two meetings, our memorial, society, during after the big campaign to raise money for shelter and your support. Also attended the Wisconsin Workforce Development Consortium Board meeting last Friday, and I will be taking training that they offer regarding your role as a consortium board member. Also, I just wanted to comment about the work that organization does and how valuable it is to employers and employees both in this whole area and this part of the state. Very interesting.
Any other supervisors? Mr. Rowdy?
Just give a quick update on the ATV, UTV, Ad hoc committee. And we had an excellent meeting last month. Ben was there and Mark, oh, maybe it's this one. Ben was there and Mark from forestry was there, and they had created a map around the five-mile loop that's already there. It'll be somewhere around 25 miles, but part of that is town roads. And, well, the four people that I have are on committees already, and Rick Wegwigan has worked with Ben, gone out there, I think Bob was with him, I'm not sure. And so they could see the site, how it came together, because Mark used a lot of, of forest roads. Well, if you create a trail through the woods, there's more work than trying to mow and grade a forest trail, so that's easier for Bob to do. So Rick is working on getting, I think Bob said, right now he's trying to get the signs up on the five-mile so that they can start on the new trail, but they're only going to do segments, because that's all that we're going to be able to get done this summer, is a certain segment. And then next summer, they'll do another segment, because if they laid out their segments the way we had the map up and they were working on it, they could go from the five-mile trail onto this segment and then hit a town road and come right back to the beginning again. So each little segment will give you a way to get to the start of the trail, where your cars are parked and trailers. So the, the project is coming together and it looks good.
Yep. Any other supervisors? Supervisor Bonner Price?
I can give you a rundown, and I took pages of notes on the steering committee. We had four meetings in March. But the, we went through item by item on the governor's budget, but that's just a wish, because we have, as you know, we have a really conservative legislature. When you heard Dan Barr talk, I do the vote for the county on each one of the resolutions. Make that clear. But some things are, are more important even than the resolutions. And you heard him talk about statewide concerns. So I addressed Highway 65 under a statewide concern, under the idea of tourism, because I remember way back, oh, about 2000, when they were trying to find a, a route to go to northern Wisconsin. But, but Lee and I went to meetings in Baldwin, and they were trying to bypass different towns. Well, I said, now that there's still water bridge, it's in a play. I said, the, the highways are just more than, than they can handle. They know pretty, pretty much what Highway 65 is, because I said it was a horse trail. Even Dan Barr says it's more than that. He says it's like a goat trail. But when I got done, there, there was quite a bit of interest, like from Dave Ockness and, and people, Highway 65 starts way down there by Red Wing and comes up through Richmond. And it's the only logical way to go to northern Wisconsin. I pointed that out, because 46th bypassing Amory, Baldwin is, is really, doesn't suffice. And Highway 35, Osceola, Somerset, doesn't suffice. There's not, there's only one stop sign between, between Richmond and, and Highway 8. And just like that, the next morning, this Rebecca Gal called me at 8:00 in the morning and wanted more information. I got her some more numbers. And then they had, they proposed a draft. Mo can talk some about that. One thing that is proposed in a draft that they did not address, though, Mo and I have talked about it several times, there's three critical hills that we need to get straightened out in that plan that we've got to get influence on, right, Mo?
Right.
You got any other comments on that? But that is a result of, you know, our being at the table.
Right.
And, and it, it doesn't just affect, you know, the people here. I brought it under tourism, affects everybody from home.
I think we'll hear more about that. I know there's public input now, right?
Correct.
So people can.
When you talk to your legislators, and I hope everybody does, we, we need to get that Highway, Highway MOP done. When they going to start on Highway?
Summer. This summer.
There's a, a date?
No, the bids are open on the 15th, so there's no construction date yet.
Okay. So this is scheduled for, it, it will be done in '24, I, I do believe. But we need to make the correct improvements on Highway 65. It's a complete resurf, looks good.
Any other supervisors? Supervisor Middleton?
Just to update on PTAG, we met last night, and you heard from Chad, we were at, we're working our way through the RFP process, but I just was going to sort of give a shout out to this group. This is a really hardworking group. They had 250 pages of RFP language to read, and they actually did their homework, back with their score sheets, and, right, we were like blown away how good they raised their hands. They were all really engaged, so we have a really great group to kind of usher this planning process through the RFP, we got the RFP process, but then when the consultant comes on board, this, this team really is engaged, so it's great.
That's, the RFP is about what? Everyone realizes what the RFP is about?
Good point. The RFP is the, the comprehensive trail network plan. This is the consulting team that will help the county do a countywide, look at all the user groups, where our gaps are, what trail links we need, and, and really spend a lot of time in each of the communities, talking about the different user groups that want trail use. And so we can address the conflicts and sort of head off some of the stuff that we might need to be addressing at some point.
If the supervisors are all done, I'm going to ask the sheriff, I know the sheriff's department's here, and I didn't jump in on the meth stuff, but Sheriff Watt, do you have anything to add to what we heard tonight, or any comments that you wanted, you guys wanted to bring to the board? I saw you on Dryden Wire, and you did very well, I just, and you, and you looked good.
Yeah. So I would just say, we do appreciate all the support we've had from the county board in our battle against methamphetamine. Don and I today and some GL staff members had a demo for tablets to provide inmates, which could further the cause of the programs. And we think we can work that deal for minimal cost. So we're always looking at new ways to combat this, and we appreciate working with you, and we appreciate your hard work on trying to solve this problem. Because at the end of the day, it's going to take everybody to solve this. Thanks.
Hey, do we have a, oh, we still have, sorry, we are going to go into closed session. I almost skipped the big one, huh? We saved this for the end, just so we could kind of finish up with everybody. Do I need a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, just before we go into closed session, I wanted to note, I see on the agenda that it is noted as pursuant to Section 19.851E. It is in fact pursuant to 19.851G. I don't believe that's going to cause any issues, but I think it should be clarified on, on, on the minutes.
Thank you. Is that that clarification? So, we have a motion going to closed session, do we have a second? Second, all in favor by saying aye?
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute break.